Once again, I'm calling the meeting, the regular council meeting for the month of February to order and welcome everyone here. We have quite a full of people tonight and I'm glad to have you here. Uh, we have the what appears to be, and we've been told before, appears to be a rather expedient agenda tonight, so we'll try to work through that. Everybody get home, have a good night's sleep, but we won't be here till midnight.
You cursed it now.
Couple of you or a few of you starting at six o'clock, you have for twenty-eight years, longer than that started at seven o'clock.
Meeting will start time maybe back an hour.
Only if we leave early. There those might take this as a challenge. Just stop.
But it's uh, it's one of, it's one of Murphy's laws that the time allowed or the expands to meet the time allowed, they'll be here. Um, would invite each of you to stand and join a moment of meditation and we will follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America into the republic which is a nation indivisible, and just for all.
Getting just, I will take a moment and that uh, my condolences to Sergeant Bill McCaskill on this end of the table because this is this week and the next week. Um, join his attempt and team. Uh, to you.
Thank you.
Uh, and we have with two boys. Uh, twenty-seven, which is my troop, troop that I grew up in, was church. Very pleased to introduce Scouter Elliot Mason. You need to stop. Scouter Waldron is here. Well, I did. Comes in, I will try and give him his due, but uh, we're proud of our scouts. Uh, scouting is, is a good thing and if you're working on your eagle, I would uh, tell you that the most things you can do as for you ahead of, so give up on it. Okay, good luck. This is the appointed time for the uh, public comment period and this is to address any items or concerns. We do, we do ask that you be able to be time involved. Try to be short, to the point to tell us. We do not, in most cases, do not uh, engage and take conversation. We will hear your concern and we will do the appropriate uh, try for anything that needs an answer or address any burning concern. So it's room tonight that will counsel. Yes, sir, come on up. And uh, is, do we have a page? Okay. Your name? Just so it is for have the audio tape, get the spelling right. So it gives us a little more to fall back on. So introduce yourself and tell us what you
My name is Roy Johnson. Um, I moved to Randolph County about three years ago. Um, I'm a minister of, I've been minister of the gospel from Florida to New England. They work, I'm, I'm not homeless situation and I just want to say anybody, the homeless is, but all I know situation for everybody and I've gone around multiple people that are with dealing with the homeless. They know that there's overlaps. They know that there's where we could less enable people and move people towards getting off the I don't, it's not a person. I believe if government area and all, we could, we could come up with some kind of committee we could put together to, to readdress this. I've heard this, that we've addressed this before and it didn't work and this didn't work and, and that's fine, but, but it sounded like the people, from what I was told, they all down and stay in their position. But that's not going to move anything forward. I'm believing to, there's, there can be, we can all gather problem. Cause what I see places like Telluride and industries coming into this area, I development demand and a community, what they're looking for, what their expectations are. I came from Nashville, New Hampshire, one of the fastest growing cities in America, deserves to live, is what I believe in Randolph County. Reason why they put the zoo here, there's a coming here, there's many people will be coming here and we need to bring Ashboro to a place together, whether it be the churches, the government, the citizens, private sector, whatever. If we can all work on this problem together, I believe that we can come up with a solution that look at the M, all of us.
Thank you. You are to, your uh, part that you especially uh, I wish from Florida to, I'm sure some cities that have the same issue. And uh, if you're solutions, if you have best ideas on, on steps to take, we'd certainly glad.
Mayor, I would love to work with one, or work with me. But one thing who even say that is not working, it's, it's futile. It's like, it's like chasing people around the community and, and, and they don't go away, they're not going away. You can chase them. Solution to be read. To have will have to offer them trying to understand, I'm not naive, there is people that want to live. That's what a police officer and the legal system is for. And I'll just tell you this, so you I'm not, I don't look at it just one way. They don't belong on somebody else's property thinking that they own it and that they can conduct themselves in any way. I think that's a fair statement. And that I don't see this just one way. We owe it and make sure that everything try to not to understand the situation where it's not conducive for the city of Ashboro.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Is anyone else in the room? Yes, sir.
To go after Roy because it's a similar, similar response, same situation. Thank you Lawson. So thank you for uh, now, because I am very passionate and I get emotional when I speak, so it's robotic. I've also been called to ministry with the, to serve an housed community. My sole purpose is to do the will of my heavenly father. Uh, to please him and honor that context. I have great passion for working nonprofit with Roy and, and brothers and I've learned and I saw because for the last fourteen months, I've helped feed, provide shelter, uh, taken the job, interviews, which uh, provide with these side with. So it's become to me. At one and I was kind of going on, uh, like I felt like they was being harassed, but for Jesus and as I serve a God, justice has to be served here also. I, I, a truth. And I'm like Roy. Work both sides solution. Also know the follower of Christ, the thing they need is Jesus. But also under joy of them, uh, because of choices ejecting well as not get off the streets. Understand that the percentage we've seen, you know, ten to fifteen percent on an action uh, make off the street. Except the resource and uh, with that being said, need a few formula. Just move selling them, uh, or giving them, even giving them everything they need, just and there's either, uh, help discover new ideas. And I'm willing that are willing. I'm in churches that are willing to name county right now, but we are over s, I think a ten to fifteen percent in churches do a hundred percent of the work. Stand that percentage. And so similarity there, right? Say oh, a bunch of churches willing to participate in programs that we uh, get going, so cities uh, to define that are actually, that are actually homeless community and the fruits of their implement here in Ashboro. Uh, pointed me to uh, what was
in homeless
and uh, uh, can, no federal government funding. The money's for, and, and local, local people. And of course, this twenty-five units, they're like small but it, you know, it could be needs around here. Me and Roy were discussing with, you know, possible I've uh, they don't have to and size tent and be private. Have to have the county on it, you know, all just an um, what they're working and it's a uh, it's a faith-based program, but there's accountability. You know, they've got to pick, got to, they've got to do all these to stay and they're actually leasing these units. So that means they're having to get jobs and they're having to provide, you know, their own way. They're having to, to get, to become a function in society, but just a small community. In other words. And uh, I would also uh, I've talked and so y'all had a meeting maybe about a year ago, had all the stakeholders uh, police county, everybody together. I, I would just asked if we could try to do something like that again. Um, and just get everybody involved. Uh, you know, the grams, the mental health, whatever we have, I, I understand that they took our mental health away from us and that's pretty effect we calls uh, in uh, we see a lot and to mention the housing problem. I understand the housing, the lack of a force is becoming this country anyway, because even around here, the cost of living has went up. Sour normal. It's such a number for my benefit, I'll sit here and call out a bunch of numbers, but it's afford housing. Uh, single person with no kids is like eighteen dollars an hour, you know, it's some crazy numbers. And there's no wonder that we're having more and more people uh, homeless. Just Carolina. Those people. When on the streets, if they don't have hands you know, they has cars. So and we also understand, we were saying just while ones that are they all in this society rules do their drugs. And uh, we're, we're learning next one that is uh, to do it and not in them same ones. And in, in saying that, getting that big I just for anyone or individual to all the praise and glory for coming up with the idea, it's got to be one community to say thank you for you.
Thank you. Uh, worked with Chuck. Uh, I gather what you both said, that you know Chuck and have worked a little bit with Chuck.
I feel that was going on and stuff. Also saying that actually just to help connect versus what I'm after.
Yeah, all, uh, it's my but offer for hook them up if that is says a people face the say any help, leave me alone. You hit on it, you talked about some of the hardcore and there's two or three different drug and dick uh, issues, but then there are people that are out there homeless, deserve our help, that are homeless through home.
One pack where they are. So I, I come from, cause the choices I was making was alcohol and drugs. And so I was, I was putting myself in that position for I so that's
But you have a better than most.
Keeps me going is, you know, in the past fourteen months, I've seen uh, twelve to fifteen get off. And some of them were got into rehab and the eight so that's what, that's what keeps you motivated. As bad as the percentage is only ten percent that's going to be zero. So I would rather work for ten or fifteen percent, but I want to improve that number up to thirty to forty percent. But with, if we come up with some new ideas and work together. It takes the village to raise a child, which to make a dent
And I'm sure
I'll be honest with you, we haven't worked with Chuck. How I ended up here two days ago talking to Trevor, Assistant City Mayor. And he, that's how he introduced me to Chuck and Chuck and me talked. Frustrated, I'm frustrated. So if we got what we got now, I just what I is he's should were together with him to do his job. His job for his job is not to build a relationship with these people, earn their trust and get them to that's what we
Okay.
Want him to do his job. If you're on my problem, I want Chuck to come along and get you on my
That's part of our mission also.
Okay.
Um, council members, I think, but just given that it's been worthwhile, we met seventeenth of this month. We have convened, discuss this very issue. I've got various stakeholders an email tomorrow, today we confirmed the attendees of that meeting. I want to give you that more than happy to include, but at the chamber, try and convene that meeting that is to try and develop an attempt to address the issues that have been raised this evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, tomorrow, did you say?
Um, no, the seventeenth, the afternoon of the seventeenth.
This is, this is Adam the new director of the Ashboro Randolph Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any else? Well, just, uh, come on up, Phil.
I'd note, I've been coming to meetings for about, and I've heard this discussed homelessness and I struggle every day with this. Hey, I all the way I was glad to hear you tonight, cause I can do that. Thank you for seeing me, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Have hats here for you if you just allow me to
Just, uh, start them on one hand, we can pass them down.
We can just pause them.
Give them a whole stack.
Thank you, sir.
This is just, this here, I have a hundred It's hard to think that thirty years ago, Mr. Swears and I on the planning board. And we were on the seat of Ashboro land. And we were looking at a plan for the next and this was nineteen ninety at that time, well, guess what? Two thousand, excuse here's twenty-five years and here we see and so I, I went through this, this report, it's very extended, I don't know if you I hope you don't, there is more maps and figures and numbers and and we could probably afford so if you'll look on the front, I was on the board at the time. Mr. Council.
Imagine that.
Mayor, yeah, it's been a while ago. So this is it's the law in Ashboro. From three to eight, that comes to a total of uh, but only eight of them are currently open. We've lost that year, so when it comes to buildings and you know situations. I can tell you about that before. Have that we have longer needed for this, but even more so now. Keep doesn't use much water, well, run the numbers. Add them up, it's what I'm concerned about. Most of all, the community appearance part of those goals were received, support the to encourage the maintenance and enhancement of community appearance is part of the land development process. And you drop down, you see point three, point one, three, point two, the city will encourage efforts to improve the appearance of major into through landscaping, science improvements. Junction with pride and develop endeavor. Appearance and design others through a variety of a lot of money's been spent here on uh, uh, when bills and the places, I've spent a lot of money Ashboro being the mother of our zoo, I think pristine when people first image they get. He's here and I that I get when I ride through town, it's like, oh, man, I'm embarrassed. When you come up there and look, you spent millions of dollars on their facilities, building the North Gate. And then you you've got Bojangles Donalds and the updated of it is the cow pad garage. Talking to Chuck about on it. You know, an ordinance for like the ordinance is The ordinance is. This can be that. What are we waiting on? I know there's been excuses made. They're gonna sell. Other business. They're gonna do that. They're not my car. Oh, but. Do you drop? Drop the hammer and say, look. Drive. That's first, they're. Ashboro. Look across the street from Biscuitville. Mustard are building with tires stacked up all around it over there. Some image. So how much deeper do I? And, uh, and see what's going on. So I think image could be improved. Council address this. New budget year. Maybe. Future council members to look at and work on. Think that might be a project and, uh, work from that. So that's, that's my points. And then the last. Is this, uh, past water. A lot of things have changed since this document was prepared. When we look at, uh. All the new housing is coming. When we look at, uh, wind speed. Uh, the city will not participate. Any water services lead. Designated rule. Exceptions, which is a. To this policy may include the services to other local governments, cooperative agreements on major. Projects. Well, the biggest thing that was coming to Ashboro when I was on the planning board was Walmart. I can remember very well. Borough was here before. Will be here when Walmart's. Well. Ashboro is still here, but that doesn't heal our. When it comes to. Our infrastructure. Personal. We're pretty weak. Water leaking through the streets. Patch me up avenue over there. Uh, I don't have to tell you about that and throughout town. Problem. And I've heard you, uh. Waste treatment. Needing to be up. And even. We got the plant up there. We're not. Uh. Speed according. We just can't. We're not, we don't have that capability. So I know we've got to look at another plant. I'll see that coming. Not a problem, but. Uh. And water. Bit maybe. Work from that. I know there's. Creek. They don't last forever and. Just like thirty years ago, it's only seems like four years ago, nineteen sixty. It doesn't seem that long ago either. But I took. Plant this week and, uh, Mr. Wiseman and also the, the water. I give those. Those. If I could give them a sanitation. Double. Those facilities. They're well taken care. Weren't, we probably would be in problem.
But they're really, really old.
They're really old. Well, let's do it this way. I was fifteen when they were built.
Really, really.
Really, really old. So, uh, yeah, so we got to look at that, but yet and we. One time at your meeting. Like what, four miles. Put the page in here about the report, but during this report, it was talking about, we could do this for forty dollars a foot. Report. So, uh. Had addressed in the interim. Ex-boards later now. I don't have. Far from nineteen. But. A lot of water. Under this town right into the ditches that we could have probably salvaged. And I don't have to belabor that, but, uh, I would appreciate you looking at this, uh, appearance of policy, put some teeth into it somehow. Uh, yes, sir.
I'd just like to say you're exactly right on appearance and as council has to get serious about enforcing. We. Look at a promise and we'd say, oh, that's not. That this or that. But we don't. Think to make it. We have ordinances. Same with our. This is important. And. Have to get as a. Uh. Better. And. The place. Down and. Following our ordinance. Cars or, uh, used tires or whatever. Uh, we need to have the. Actually. Make a difference.
You know. Duties. Uh, the. Planning board and. Or we're just gonna lay them to the side and say, well, we can get by another day or two. Where I work in the military, wherever you are. Hey, regulations are regulations. Chance after that, three times. Not to do that. I don't. Possible, but some of these guys are just thumbing or no, just put it that way. Thumbing or no that we can.
I get. About ten. I was talking in my head.
Well, I. Talked to some. While you fellas. Isn't it to you? The solution someday. We'll find out and, uh, and work from that. And again, on the home.
My prayers with you.
Find a solution. We need to, uh. We need to attack the problem, find a solution.
Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
Anybody? Best tonight. I think. Boy scout come in. Mr. Waldron. Stand up. Uh, this is another scout. Trip five twenty-seven, um, Garrett Waldron and, uh. Good to have you here tonight. Hope you'll. Scout. Possibly can. Do you get your. So. Have you here tonight? Oh. But another. To. Director for the. My Richard Hudson, Cam. Mills, come on. Address.
Mayor, City Council. Having me. Get. Reason for being. My person. Do to help with the homeless issue. I think it takes all levels of government, all levels of private citizens, um, and all levels of groups to. That something. That. Um. For our help. Moving forward. Thank you for helping with that. Uh. Town and. My life and. I think there's no easy. That. I think we've got. Bull. And the great, great. Solution like that. So I'll get. Um, last time I was here. I think I was a boy. In. Chip. And I had to. Your Smith's on my paper. So. I don't. From it. I'll go the. Time. I want to go home. End up getting. Just charge you guys. Get your. It's got. Interviews, meetings. It's taken me a long, long way in life, so stick with it. It'll pay off one day. Um, but, uh, I'm here for you, Mr. Manager. Our office. Got your wrong guy. I'm here for you. Um. A congressional. To you. Uh. From Hudson. Um. Little part here to you. So. Uh. Presented on the. Uh, in the. Washington DC. One is. And debates of. Congress. Honoring. Ogburn the third. And leadership. February the sixth, twenty twenty-five Congressman Hudson. Speaker of the. I write. To honor. And Ogburn. Decades of. To the people of Randolph. Ashboro, North Carolina. So John. Present this to you on behalf of Congressman.
Brain twenty-four year. Wingman. Job for the. Uh. Done what we. Community without him. He was a visionary. Uh. People like. Mayor call, I mean. You call me as more than seven. That means that John's been up all night with an idea. If it's not something that just popped into his mind, it's usually ten or eleven. But if it's seven or seven thirty, it's because John's been up all night waiting for the clock to give him permission to call me. So. An incredible job. We're all gonna miss him. Uh. Our new, new manager and I think he'll do a good job too. Uh, but nobody can fill the shoes of this man right here.
Thank you, but I could not have done it without, uh, my wife Martha.
Well, we all know that.
I just think it's that. Make sure Holly does it in the record.
Okay, uh. We got a couple of representatives tonight of the Tourism, uh. Party and I will call on Melody Varner, who is Tourism Marketing Coordinator with the Heart of North Carolina Visitors Bureau.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Council, and it's a pleasure to do this before John retires and go on his long vacation. Please. So I am really. Tonight to present. Report. Development Authority. Yes, twenty twenty-three was two years ago. Year and it's just due to how we see, receive our state number. But in twenty twenty-three, the TDA celebrated twenty-five years of destination marketing for the county. Of North. For the trail. As all y'all know in. Senator Mary Joan Pugh, we're very grateful for her. Huge efforts and just bringing a spotlight to Randolph County. Trails and how. Here, um, just to go about like twenty. You know, there was a lot. We supported in the county. We supported in Ash. From the Ashboro Zookeepers, the Friday Night Tribute Bands. I know we all enjoy Rhino Leap Productions. The annual. Music. La Fame. Live. And now. Health Zoo City Sportsplex, which in twenty twenty-three, we have that soft opening. I know y'all know. All right, to dive right in. So starting with the economic impact numbers in Randolph County, travel generated one hundred eighty-nine point five million dollars in visitor spending. An increase of six point. Twenty twenty-two. Twenty. Three. And state. Five million in local. Reported. And one hundred and forty. Some jobs. And forty-three point nine million dollars in payroll income. The sales tax generated by travel throughout Randolph County is attributed for a tax savings of eighty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents per county resident in twenty twenty-three. Move. See tax revenues in twenty twenty-three. Revenues in Randolph County were reported at one million, four hundred and six, nine hundred and ninety-eight. X five percent increase from twenty twenty-two's one million, two hundred and eighty-three. Thirty-three. These taxes are collected from hotels, motels, Ben &amp; Breakfast Ends, Airbnb properties, and even structures on campgrounds in our county. Occupancy at these. At fifty-nine point five percent. That is three point seven percent higher. Two's occupancy. Visitors paid an average daily. Nails at our properties of one hundred and nine dollars and sixty-two cents. That was an increase of six point four percent from twenty twenty-two. From this rate charge on each room, revenue. To be. Three cents. Nine point five percent. So we're getting. Of what we saw. Which is really good. All right, and demand. Rooms increased three point four percent compared to twenty twenty-two and overall revenues increased by nine point one percent when compared to the prior year. Is all showing. Which we're very grateful. Moving on to destination data, each year. Our tourism attractions in the county to evaluate their visitation records with the visitor spending that has been reported. Of the thirty attraction survey, they reported approximately one million, five hundred and sixty-seven, nine hundred and thirty visitors for the calendar year in twenty twenty-three, an increase of ten percent for twenty twenty-two. Visitors came from these top states, of course, other parts of North Carolina, South Carolina, Virginia, Ohio, Illinois, Pennsylvania, Florida, Michigan. And. And we welcome visitors. Lit Metro area, the Raleigh metro area as well, Hickory, Statesville and Salisbury, of course Greensboro, Wentzum Salem and High Point. And even Fayetteville, Lumberton, Laurenburg, Women's. National request came. Canada, India. Kingdom. Collection of this detailed data enables. A plan for strategic. Placement placement in the. We know are already visiting our area to then encourage return for visits for additional visitor spending. Through visitor inquiries, we were able to provide collateral materials that they can request through our website that has now been updated to. Taking a look. They get. County. Soon we'll have the twenty. Be requesting. The Seagrove. Of course, the North Carolina Zoo. Street in. County. Trails. The Aviation Museum, Petty Family, Lynbrook, Victory Junction, and Crusie Valley Attractions and Caraway Speedway. Some of you surely know that we also operate our I seventy-three, seventy-four visitor centers in Seagrove. Highly recommend you stop and buy. We're in a partnership with. Outreach of our tours. We. employees and one full-time working six days a week at the visitor centers in Seagrove. In twenty twenty-three, they assisted one hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-three visitors, which was amazing. We had to do a little celebration when we hit that one hundred thousand mark, which was a huge deal as that. Percent increase from twenty twenty-two's sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight visitors. From these interactions, we were able to distribute key travel-related materials. As our lovely. County travel guide. As our lovely county travel guide, which was a thousand requested. The North. Roadmaps. Thirty-seven hundred and fifty. Carolina State Travel Guides as well, one hundred and fifty. Domestic guest registry numbers were three thousand four hundred and twenty. Registry entries were. Third to fifty-five in twenty twenty-one. And we got the opportunity to host. Amazing events out there that were continued. National Travel and Tourism Week in May, Operation Thank You that we now have at our office here in Ashboro, given back to our first responders, Open House in November, and our Twelve Days of Christmas in December. His social media site. In twenty twenty-three, we witnessed remarkable growth in our social media accounts. The page reach. Number of people engaged with our content soared across. Part of NC harness the power of paid targeted content. Impressive audience reach of seven million five five hundred and twenty-two, fueled by our outstanding digital influencers. Moving on to public relations and. Efforts, in twenty twenty-three, we are fortunate to host nineteen members of the media with local, national. Reach. These media. Influencers, social media. Vloggers, there's a lot of different. We are grateful for one of them. Visiting editors and freelance writers. From these media. We saw notable results. Credit to work by. Are three hundred and thirty-one. Forty-three online placements with estimated views of one point four million. Ten print placements with total readership of five point six million. Social posts for media that we hosted, one hundred and ninety-four. Four television segments. National, one state. Two local. Seventy-one tours. Featured in. Going on to visual advertising. Twenty-three led the way for. Ten advertisements, that's both print and digital to targeted audiences in the triangle, the state of North Carolina, and reaching out to Virginia and South Carolina markets. We took advantage of prominent marketing opportunities for seasonal. With advice specific to the demographic. So we got great. Going with. Polish showcasing. Trails during the year of year. We have an outstanding partnership with our state magazine that just continues to. We did four videos with. Production, there was family. Enjoying. Exploring the out. And Richard Petty become hero. And there might be one council member that might be in one of those videos. She did amazing. Continued our. Media partner, group of exception. Shining at light on the vibrant communities of Chapel Hill, Chatham County, and Durham. Inspire us, our presence. Local publication brimming with news from. County. Even going with the military market, the Griffin Basin and Fayetteville market, that is a huge relationship we have there, and we're grateful for it. You got the Courier Tribune, and as I said again. Magazine. Elizabeth Hudson and. This parade. Going along with my final thoughts, our marketing efforts continue to be supported by each of our nine municipalities that possess. Shining. Those tourism partners are the true heroes of this success. Survive for visitors. S that help. Our commitment to. Their passion. And focus on being. Affordable, strategically located. In the heart of North Carolina. Appreciate your time this evening, and if there's any questions, answer them to the best of my ability.
Questions from Melody?
I've got a couple of questions. I saw the news today about cycle North Carolina. Mountains to the coast. October and Ash. One of the towns on the route, which is exciting. About that.
Very exciting for me. Learned this was. Pandemic when they had overnight. So learning about this was really neat how a lot of them will. CA, which is our. A lot of them will stay over. And then we have worked out to get hotels. Who want that, which that would be me. Just a lot. Uh, this will. At the back of that. Stop here. Plans to work out a warm welcome. In previous times, they've been to Creekside Park and Archdale. I got to be at this rest stop. Their launch spot, and even we had another rest stop in Randleman, so it's a great crowd. They're all right, they're all very. So we're very excited that they're bringing. Stop, and I feel we all got. But we're just ready to start the plan. And fun welcome for the time that they are here.
That's great, and the TDA, I mean, all of us up here know and understand how important a partner the TDA is to the city. I know that you've been helping with sportsplex events. And lodging, can you talk?
Yeah. I usually. Now to see how. Of our hoteliers as we, I work on the. I visit the. Relationships and so. Somebody who's coming. Sportsplex needs. Or that sort. Offer welcome package. Formed about their. That they can do, and even if they don't have. Opportunity to encourage them to come back.
That's great, thank you for that, and then just one personal note. Melody has been serving as Chair of the Christmas Events Committee for the last three years, and just appreciate her leadership and working with the chamber. Events happen, which are very important to our community, so thank.
Thank you, I appreciate your guidance. Your award recently was well deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan, it was.
Interesting. Oh, item six. Now I'll call on Angie Palito, who's Randolph County Public Library Community Navigator.
Good evening. Palito, Community Navigator. Is that better? I'm Angie Palito. Editor with the Randolph County Public Libraries. I had. Task the past. To set up the endless count as part of the federal government's point in time count here in Randolph County. And for those. Be aware of what. Count is, it is a snapshot. Their day in January. We literally. Camps, taught. In the camps. Had a. Sources and housing programs and. Report that data to the government. The point of it is to bring federal housing dollars to Randolph County through programs such as rapid rehousing, which helps pay for. Security deposits for rent and utilities, and then the permanent supportive housing program. Going housing program for individuals. Been out and did the. Ever done it before? Totally did not know. Um, it has grown over the past two years. Um, I actually had a lot of help this year from individuals in the community. View, community hope. Um, the. Division Employment. Places, that's. Voke rehab. This place. Apartment and the. Office. I had volunteers for. Those agencies mentioned. I also requested supplies from the community, and our community rallied and dropped off tons of supplies at the library. We were able to hand out sixty-eight bags of supplies that included hand warmers, hygiene wipes, snacks, emergency blankets, lip balms, I mean, you name it, we got it donated to. So we went out. One of the coldest days in January. It was. But we. Thanks to. Years that went with us, unsheltered, and I know this is not nearly all of the individuals, but we counted across Randolph County, a majority of them in Ashboro. Had. From Arch. Randleman and Seagrove that were counted. We counted a hundred and twenty, and like I said, I know that's not all of them. That were unsheltered, that were on the streets and in the camps, and we went to the camps. Um, we also counted a hundred, twenty-seven gentlemen that are housed at the Ashboro Shelter of Hope. Also counted were forty-five individuals that are currently at Lydia's place, and then the individuals that are also at the Family Crisis Center would have been counted, but I don't have that number yet. I don't have a total overall number from the state yet because we're still entering the data, but some asked me at. Wink. About the. At the jail temporarily. If they're there on the official night of the count, they don't get counted, but I sat down this morning and went through the jail roster, and there are thirty-five individuals currently housed at the Randolph County Jail that were either listed as homeless. I had worked. Cassidy. Years. All the numbers I. From. Initially between the individual. Through the library and Lydia's place. Ninety-two, and if you include the thirty-five individuals that are currently. Jail. Hundred and twenty-seven. Last year when. Out of unhoused. Was a hundred and two, so that number has increased. From a hundred and. Hundred and twenty years. No, that's nearly, that's not.
Any question?
See any?
Very. Um, there are. But not.
Were they? Post-trauma. Substance.
Combination of. That. Disorder. Disorder. And I will say that there are. Individuals that. Ones this year that. Have not counted.
Thank you so much.
While you're mentioning the count, ain't you? Look this side of the table, not. We have the jail, which you mentioned. We also have the. EMS. Brings people up. Take them to the hospital. Family. Body. Get them, so, and we have treatment centers, that kind of jail. So our sister city of Lexington or Salisbury.
And the library. Program, I should have. The main. For the entry type. Rehousing and the permanent supportive housing. Now, only person. Randolph County that. Into. To stay homeless. Um, somebody had asked me that when I first got here tonight, and I didn't go back until. Wanted to get. In for. The majority of. But there are women as well, and some, some women that I have counted.
I do. Thank you guys. And before I get started, two things, and I don't want to drag this on long. Uh, John, we've done this for a long time. This will be our last. And it's been an. Thank you. Thank you. And second is Angie, you guys. Angie, before you maybe met her. Because of. She. Dragged places. I really appreciate that, Angie, thank you for going. Being said. Been a busy year, but they're all. And so. I'll get. Do it. This year, have been thirteen. The question, those are situations where volunteer groups are. On me to go in and. Across a problem. Elderly person. Their disability. An issue. Can issue with, and I look for a. Solution. Their volunteer group. Deal with that. Notices of. This year, two. Uh, which is really not of the number of. Of them are resolved. Conver. Risen to the level. Structures removed. Teen and encampments retired. And I thought this. Was enough. Been a busy year all the way around. This is an. Of. Process taking place. Have. For demolition, what. On that is the backside of that house. Um, big tree fell on it. It was. By the tree. And then. The. Little dig in. Code truck. And the end result. Looks today. Though it was a definite. To the community to. Homes, vacant homes tend to attract unwanted. This one. Will. To. Uh, Mr. Talking about some. This property. Source of. And it was a. Appended. Terms. Yes, the end result. And, and talking to him, his problem ceased. Other. This is kind of the aftermath of a cleanup. Structures. Six structures on it. In the area of the mall and. Problem. This is before. I. When I. In camp.
There's a homeless.
Yes. Uh, and. An after picture. This was. Big. This was our most recent one. And Public Works got. Enough about their hard work. And it's important for us. Public Works or. Cleanups. And this is how. Ground is to. Clean it up. Till we can put. Trucks in there. For. Kill to. Or contractors. Then push it back. Because these sites are by. Guys are trained and have the proper equipment to do it with. And typical of every. That I.
Started with. I realized. So dangerous.
Right.
It all with loaders.
It all with loaders.
Salt, now, that's an op, a lot of owners don't, and why guys are trained in the gens that they come up. Was a gun taken out of the encampment. And presentation for this year, I, I, and I always appreciate the opportunity, I feel like a broken, because largely, so maybe next year I'll spice it up with.
On the, the city has to pay the, for the demolition.
A, a lot of.
Okay, so I mean, he waited, we can maybe get back.
Be more, um, but it's, it's my take on that, to, to, that, all city to get there would be exponentially more, and hiring, and, and it did, it will sound like a, remember the house on South Rock Street that sat there? Like that, it needs to be addressed, and up in court, there for two years, and it's very much cheaper, it's a month, and as opposed, so, this, however, you know, but quickly as possible.
Committee.
Oh, yeah.
In answer, it's possible to put a, the city has lees, but there is a process that it also tends, and feel free, more often, called either in identity or owners who, or if you've got, and won't.
Right.
Then the city has to do, the more likely it is, you end up with a lean, if you don't expedite the process.
Yeah. The vastment, the property inheritance also, and somebody inherited, probably didn't start with camp maintain financially, and it gets in this. Other. That's coming right up. Thank.
Called Chuck one day, I mean, here I said, you're in the army, you're driving, whatever need to, or think of that, Chuck drives me in, or unwind on it.
Yeah, we, we, laps around good miles.
All good miles.
All good miles.
I kept my foot with the.
That's right.
Recall the neighbor's story this morning.
Uh, well, sure, I'm not.
If I don't.
If you don't, yeah.
We cleaned up.
I know the story now.
That picture.
Yeah.
The big pile.
Yeah.
Uh, and as Chuck was leaving, the cleanup had been done, everybody had kind of gone, laid in on the business, came running out of her business, and lagged him down. He drives a, it says.
From the. Yeah.
Are you, think you're doing, being, uh, this person he is, he said, what do you think I'm doing? You cleaning up that camp?
Yeah.
He said, yes, ma'am. She says, the Lord. I had to call one-one for, they, I was in my bathroom, they were stealing me, all right, people, I need help. We got twenty-eight thousand. He is just one that, that's willing to express her opinion, but the trash that you just looked at camps, and his room that was in their backyard. That's why we do what we do, and it may have been for being, being SOB, heartless, to the, eighty-eight thousand people, and the majority of that in their backyard. He was, that we, I'm cleaning up that camp.
Process, that's another thing, it is a process to get to the, where we actually go in like we did this, it just can't, that's not necessarily the thing, because, or we would be hard to make, and.
The, the heroin, fentanyl, what, what, what drug are they?
I ain't bought it, I've heard five, uh, fentanyl. Is that about right?
Static and it's cheap. And cheap. So, thank you very much for, John.
Appreciate it.
Do we have reports here? Sir.
Yes, sir, thank you for.
Thank you, sir. Um, you have a consent agenda, and. Item D, there was a, an error discovered in, uh, meeting minutes for, so that item for the consent agenda to be considered, and unless there are, I will approve the consent as it's presented to us.
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda with the item presented to us.
We have a motion by Mr. Burks, do I have a second? He discussed.
Hi.
Approved, item D. Mr. Evans.
Um, Mr.
You're up.
Thank you, sir, and counsel, good evening, so.
Let me introduce A.
Sure.
Sorry. Ladies, I will open the hearing for an application to rezone from RTM Meeting Density Residential Office and Institutional. The KZ twenty-five, that, that, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, so there in your package, a, a, a request for a continuance, we would recommend that that continuance be, be approved.
Regarding the request for a, and a motion that we, until the March sixth meeting.
Mayor, I move we grant continuance.
Have a motion, Mr. Bell, do I have?
Second.
Mr. Swier, second, all in favor, all opposed? Motion carries to continue item nine A until the March sixth meeting. Uh, item nine B, quasi case number SUP twenty-four zero-two, is an application for especially
That this is a quasi, would be the time for, to make the oath.
While I have to speak on this case, sworn, step over in front of the, and we'll, we'll do everybody at one time. If you're not sworn, it's true, what you decided, if you would like to speak, he'll speak.
Okay, so, so the particular cases, J, contracting LLC, property, excuse me, located at seven, J Co. Cottle Drive, intersection of Highway forty-nine, the general and, actual use permit, there is one parcel identification number that's part of the request, the property is just over nine and a half acres, the current land use is manufacturing, processing, and assembly. So, of course, the tetanus coordinates is, this billboard and poster panel, et cetera, as I mentioned, this, the, the use is manufacturing, assembly, and the, invited some dimensions, you all have plans there at your places, those show a height of thirty feet, and the dimension thirty by ten, the face is LED display, in your package to show the appearance of that. If we look at the area, it's, it's primarily surrounded by industrial, property, potential uses in, in the area, directly contiguous, some sort of a, and so NC forty-nine is a major thoroughfare, J Co. Cottle Drive is a maintained, the property is a hundred feet north, change of, or bypass, and you'll see that on the photo we'll present. Billboards to review DOT, so as you'll see on one of the requirements, DOT, were to approve for a billboard, they have their own permissions that they will need to, to review. And so, are some location separation required within the, 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 or, it's the district, have a, a, a long cases, forty-nine, there has to be a thousand feet of the proposed billboard from others, and a hundred feet of residentially zone property. We have determined that locational have, have been met. And we did return some comments, applicant back on, of course, this case has been continued a couple of times, and based on the latest plan that we received on the twenty-second, we, we believe these comments have been addressed, and so, in terms of the permitting of the billboard, that is looked at exclusively of any other that are in the, any, any other signage that is allowed in the I two zoning board is its own standalone review, requires in that zoning dish, just looking at requirements. Is one in policy that relates, is policy three point two, point three, stating that the city will require signs that blend with the surrounding streetscape and other architectural elements of a site, firing monument style signs that match, landscape, and unified plan, large elements. So the, the located right in the of the map, along Highway forty-nine, at almost the, the west boundaries of the section, just to the north there, for bypass, this parcel A, you also have the surrounding parcels, and I will mention that those surrounding parcels have been notified within the proper time period, also signs have been posted on the property on NC forty-nine and J Co. Cottle Drive, and the request has been advertised. Terms of, you'll see more photos that we show, fairly rolling piece of property here, and you also have the utilities map showing a forced main on the opposite side of forty-nine as, as well as city water. So the aerial map shows you the subject property outlined in red, you see the other primarily industrial uses and property, property. The oblique map shows you a little dimensional view of the property and some of the surrounding properties, and so taking a look at some photos, this is the, NC forty-nine south, J Co. Drive is where the guardrail is off, kind of on the right, right there, and you also see location of, fairly close to that intersection, so this shows you the view from forty-nine south, if you're looking, of course, to the left, and the, there's kind of a grade difference between NC and where the billboard would be, in, in discussing that or having some communication with the applicant about that, they have indicated that the base of the billboard will be grade, just about, so that will be lower than NC forty-nine where the, where the very base of the billboard is located.
Is that, Ed, is it, you're talking about?
The wall between. The, just right. This view is from J Co. Cottle Drive, so this kind of shows you that, from that vantage point, what, what you would be looking at and about where the billboard would be, and then this is looking south on J Co. Cottle Drive, a, as I mentioned, there, there is some residential area, one of those is off to the rock, behind the property line on the opposite, pretty, located, more than a hundred, closer to approximately three hundred where the billboard is located. This is looking south, forty-nine south, drive is off to the left, so you see the sixty-four bypass, looking to the north, NC forty-nine. So on the, see, the billboard, that is directly in front of all that we, Mr. Trogdon had asked about, there are all seven parsori juniper shrubs that are shown around the billboard, there is some land that is proposed around that, that area. is proposed around that that area. So just to show a closer view of the billboard, as I mentioned, the grade location at seven hundred and fifty feet is about where you see the next to the retaining property is lower would be seven hundred and eighty feet. So it in height. And there you see the other dimension of thirty feet by ten. So I won't read all of these technical requirements unless the council has specific questions. I'll be more these. But the point that I do want staff has reviewed the plan against criteria and the 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 site was meet these requirements as we go through your list there. You have these in your packets as well. And we, like I say, if you have any questions, we can we can look at those.
What's a knit?
So that is
I'm made with a lumen.
Sure. Sure. It 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 is sort of very technical measurement intensity. So so that is things that we are proposing that exceeds the general order. And and so so as as we go through through to that condition, as a matter of fact. We are proposing that the brightness five thousand nits during the day. Five between dawn. The the electronic changeable copy requirements that were discussed with the earlier, and so is a reasonable condition to deal with intensity. Sure, sure. It is a fairly unusual sort of a sort of measurement. And so so looking at the conditions, the first one is that the this will continue to allow any use permitted by right in the I-two zoning districts. Say general should now it would qualification. Billboard fitted through the special and iterate that the billboard will have to meet those requirements, which we have reviewed and and determined are consistent based on the site plan review. Item B is before the issuance of a zoning permit. The applicant will be required to obtain North Carolina DOT as well final decision document counsel if approve this request. And item C deals with how often the the copy can change. That is also consistent with our ordinance so that it so that any sort of copy change on a minimum five-second delay, that is a a traffic safety protection. And so that is why we are proposing that as a condition. And of course, as Mr. Moffett asked on the nits, that is number five dealing with the brightness of the of the sign. So so the findings of fact are here for the applicant to to address, but I will be glad to answer if there are any further questions.
So the sign will be twenty feet
Approximately. Right, it'll be thirty feet from the bottom of the sign to the top, about twenty feet, as best as I can tell, from NC forty-nine.
Now, the D. Said DOT will have to prove this.
That's that's correct.
Is this sign in the city limits? Is that bills in the city limits, right?
It is. ETJ or they wouldn't.
Right, I I can confirm that.
I'm sure the owner
wondered would it be paying city taxes? I think it's stopped up the type of mat lab plant. I don't know. I don't like that. I would guess. Be right. But they're not cheap.
It 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 does show that it is in the city limits.
It is in the city.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't know they value it.
I'm more excited than I was. Well, this included a couple of visit Ashboro flashes or?
Potentially, yes, yes.
Thanks for the
Members of council, my name is Nick Blackwood, eight oh four Green Row here on behalf of the applicant. With me this evening is is our civil engineer and H.R. Gallimore to supplement with some expert testimony regarding property value for the the third finding of fact there. So it's okay. To distribute. And a lot of what you see in this packet will duplicate staff's very thorough report, so I appreciate breeze over pages and just kind of as we go if needed. But to begin, J. Ashborough's business about thirty years. Rated onsite, and they've determined that they have some excess space that's being underutilized position for this type of outdoor advertising sign. But as mentioned by the business would remain on the site. Weekend, if you'll flip along with me, I believe we can breeze past the second third slides in your packet. Staff thoroughly covered. Well, familiar with the property. And we'll we'll hold slide four for now and come back on that in just a moment. I think, you know, just given the the report provided by staff, I think we can dive right into the the fact and the information in determining responses to these findings of fact. That the use will not danger the public health or safety if located where proposed. And thinking through just given that billboard next relatively quiet neighborhood much by the way of impacts from a noise or use or knock fumes or anything like that associated with another use requiring a special use permit. Really, the the key thing that that we considered was the sightline will at that access point. They're not that or accessing from that private right-of-way or public right-of-way, sorry. So four. And now this is just a rough GIS approximation using the measuring tool. But we're measuring approximately eighty-five feet from our property line to the pavement of Highway forty-nine. So you'll you'll note that as you're pulling out of J. Co. Cottle Drive, accessing Highway forty-nine, there's really no potential any impact on sightline for folks who are, you know, looking for oncoming traffic as they're merging. Let's see. Factor number two, that the use meets all required conditions and specifications of the Ashborough zoning ordinance. As staff referenced several times, we believe that all the all the development standards laid out in the development ordinance for this type of use are satisfied. I have Mac Summy, our civil engineer here, who can address any specific questions pertaining to the site plan and those development standards. But would just refer you to staff's comments regarding the compatibility with those And at this point, I'd like to ask Mr. Gallimore to join me at the podium and give his expert opinion as to impacts on property values.
Name me up. Yeah. John, it has been a pleasure working with you these last many years. You've done an outstanding job. It will be our loss. I hope you will have a happy retirement.
Made Ashboro better. Thank you.
I didn't realize you were calling David at seven AM. You've called me a few times about that time, but I didn't know you'd been calling David. I've been asked to talk about the values and how it might impact values of adjoining properties. The first one I'll mention, that J. Co. Cottle Road, Mr. Reader does live there. He has had his property on the market for the last couple of years, looking for a commercial candidate. I think they've talked about multifamily, possibly. I think the bigger hold up there is finding proper water and sewer availability. So I think that's going to change as well. Think the loop in that loop has kind of changed the the whole area to some degree. Been out there a couple of times, rode the corridor, and there really aren't any residential users other than him still there. In the area that I see that could have problems. Particularly the boards specifically located in high-traffic areas, which be residential. You don't see these going up you would Don't think from a I would venture to say it probably the local business properties in and and up there. I think it can help on into the cities. People love to see the ability to to advertise their their firms and their businesses. With that said, I don't see, it's been my been my experience in other locations. We don't have that many electronic boards in Ashboro. But I have done a good bit of business throughout the triad and along around the state. And I've not seen any negative impact from the boards. Example would Kingsborough. Those property values soar and soar and soar. Lot of boards up there, but it doesn't seem to have any negative impact. That would be my point at this. Eddie Mike could speak on that. You've done a good bit of business with outside boards, but they don't seem, they're quiet neighbors, as was just mentioned. And lighting is controlled on the I was like you Walker. I wasn't familiar with that NIT or I thought it was a basketball tournament. Any other question? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gallimore. Moving on to factor four, that the location and character of the use developed according to the plan as submitted and approved will be in harmony with the area. Referenced both in staff's report and earlier in the presentation, the property is bordered by a significant industrial zoning districts and the property is identified as industrial in the city's There's been recent NC DOT improvements to the exchange of the interstate west. I think this is a good opportunity to provide for some advertising services there and make the most of those infrastructure improvements and costs that went into improving that interchange. Ashboro is experiencing significant growth as a community. I think you heard some figures earlier in the meeting, the amount of folks who are coming here. So this would provide a great opportunity for getting off the highway, turning on to turning on to the other Highway forty-nine for, you know, advertising of businesses and, you know, possibly the zoo and and other amenities that your that your city offers. And one thing I think that's important to consider is that the opted some enhanced words with respect to these the the maximum distance of spacing separation between billboards per NC DOT's requirements is five hundred feet. So I think you all have done a good job of already, you know, looking into potential impacts on property owners and then trying to prevent an overabundance in your community standards that you've already adopted per the that fits those those criteria forth for this this type of use. So with that, I'm happy that you might have.
Mayor, I have one. Are the suggested conditions proposed by staff amenable to the applicant?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? I guess you're done. Has anyone said we'd like to address anyone else? I didn't mean it. It sounds so abrupt. I guess you you're done. Uh, council?
Our young Mr. Blackwood. The I've done several cases. The I believe the presentation addressed the four-step test favorably in that step one, the endangerment. The engineering drawings have a PE stamp and are seem to be added structure and nothing surrounding it. Step two would be the staff has reviewed it and the conditions are acceptable to the owner. I think the value presentation itself, given the zoning that go in, it's an expected seems to cover the surrounding area. And step four, again, it's it's an industrial area of property being marketed as such. I believe I believe the four-step test has been passed. I would make a motion that we approved the special use permit with the conditions outlined by staff.
We have a motion by Mr. Moffett to approve. Do we have a second?
A second.
Where was that?
Eddie.
Eddie? Mr. Burks. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion. Good job.
Mr. Leonard. Leonard will patients fulfilling a vacancy on for the authority.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At their regular meeting of the Ashboro Airport Authority on January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. The authority took into applications for seat as forwarded from council at the last January meeting. After discussing their discussion, the airport authority is recommending two applicants for appointment to the to this vacant seat. First being Mr. Alan York and the second being Mr. Randy Freeman. And you have in your packets both of those applications for your consideration.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor. Vast experience with both aircraft and pilot and pilot management and airports. I recommend that we appoint Alan York to the Ashboro Airport Authority.
We have a motion by Mr. Moffett to appoint Alan York in the airport authority. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discuss. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Currys? Thank you, sir. I request council action on a proposed amendment to professional services agreement with HDR.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I will try to be brief, but in your packet, you have amendment number one for the professional services agreement for the owner's advisor services for our main extension and you executed already for phase one for this project for owner's advisor. And that was to get us through sixty percent design, preconstruction services, permitting, all those things. We've completed most of those We've completed most of those tasks for the first three sections. We're still working on getting sixty percent drawings for section one. But we're. To construction side of things and there's an amendment to provide owner's advisor service. These two, which is construction administration. So the first. The original professional services agreement was for three hundred fifty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars. The second phase is going to cost four hundred sixty-five thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars. And you can see in there that there are some line items that we aren't using all the funding. Ones, we're carrying those over to phase two for reduction in those costs. Keep in mind, this project is being reimbursed. From the commerce for this project. So these, these expenses are reimbursable and we will get those through that grant. So this, it's our total construction agreement, professional's agreement, professional service agreement with HDR for owner's advisors or services at eight hundred twenty thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars. I'd be glad to answer any questions concerning this.
Question?
Okay, with that, all I need is your approval to let the city manager execute this agreement.
Do we have a motion to authorize?
Mayor, I make a motion that we authorize the current city manager to. Endure this agreement. Quickly.
Have a motion by Mr. Moffett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Where was the second? Mr. Bell was the second.
Unanimous second.
Fast drying ink in his bowl.
Discussion. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Have they begun, before you sit down, have they begun construction on phase four?
Section four is from Eastern Renoff High School and they were supposed to start digging last Thursday. So we are putting pipe in the ground.
I can confirm that for your argument.
Okay. Okay. Now we got to go.
Come on, Mr. Hutchins.
This our last one, two time?
Yeah. Well, I may have.
Remember what I told you?
Yeah, just remember that. For you. All right. Uh, to give you an update on. Parking lot, I won't keep you long. You throw the first one up there. The map right here shows the ones, the buildings outlined in red along trades, along Sunset and Trade Street. Those are the ones that we're going to propose to use the dumpster site. Hopefully it'll work out. We've got them. For containers and. Keep in mind, that was one of our biggest holdups the past few weeks because. You're using mortar and it gets eighteen degrees at night. So that held us up, but we finally got that finished. Decorative block, but we couldn't get any. So finally found a place where we could send a truck and go pick up concrete block. We've got it built. We've got it stuck out so it'd match everything else up there. It really looks good. They've done a good job because we're not brick or block layers, but luckily Jimmy let us borrow Steve Troggen for a couple of hours to get us started and it worked out. Now, as far as the parking lot where we're at right now. We've got the stone. We set the stone yesterday in order to put the binder down, which the stone's got to dry out. We've got that done. Concrete's poured inside the closures. We done that Tuesday, finished the stucco Monday, so. We're getting there. We're there. Now, good thing is we haven't paved it yet because I found out that the power company is wanting to move the dip pole, which is the pole where the power comes across the street, goes down the ground and goes up Trade Street to the transformers. They're proposing, we're going, supposed to meet an engineer, well Jimmy will be with us too because he understands more about the power than I do. They're wanting to put, looking at putting it in the grass strip in front of the parking lot, which means they did their four-inch conduit run across the parking lot. So we're going to meet them out there and if that's what they want to do, if they'll tell me where they need both ends to come up, I'll dig it out and lay the parking lot, keep the stone from getting as contaminated as possible. So all we have to do is reset that section. Might throw us a couple of days behind, but like Councilman Moffett said, you know, it's not a great time of year to pave anyway. But the plan is, once we get everything, the stone set and dried out enough, we can get the binder down. Conditions are good for topping it. We're going to top it. If not, we'll wait till the conditions are.
And they are not.
But if we have to. For a little bit, it can still be used. We can still paint it. Now, the alleyway I did want to point out, coming across the back to Trade Street, that when the power company puts their boxes and all in and they start running, they're going to cut across that. So the alleyway, I probably will binder and leave it till after the power company goes through. Then we'll patch that binder back, then I'll cap that part, put the top mix on it. Next thing, we do. Have been working on how people are going to access this thing. I'm just going to have them call Public Works, you know, we'll have to get the word out, go talk to these people, meet with these people. And, you know, basically they show us proof that they're using that building, whether it be a bill in their name or a lease agreement. We'll issue them up to two keys for the dumpster. And basically what we. Once we get these done. Use, you know, we might have to talk to these people and say, you know, time limit on the can collector one thousand on Trade Street. We're only going to leave it out there another month. So you're going to have to do something.
Go sell that surplus.
You want to buy? You can put a reserve on it. Am I right? You can put a reserve.
I'm not sure what to do with it. It's just such a handy.
And. Get out building for nothing. But anyway, yeah. The best idea, but at the time it was the only idea. Just goes to show not all ideas are good. But anyway, that's pretty much where we're at on it. And there's your couple of pictures I took. I took those pictures Monday, you know, when they finished. They were actually just finished up the enclosure. And like I said, that was the day before we set the stone.
And so just, just for the edification of, of the rest of us, how deep is the part we don't see in the dumpster? How deep?
I'm going to say, I didn't actually measure it, but I'm going to say it's going to be about.
Four feet in the ground.
No, more like probably. Yeah, probably about eight or feet. Eight feet.
Eight feet in the ground.
They're big.
But like I said, we've had, and I think, I think she's put a picture in my newsletter somewhere I seen. I sent you a pic, well, of a truck actually picking it up, so we know it will work.
And they'll walk up from the right-hand side here.
Yeah, and.
They'll roll down, they'll roll their trashcans or whatever, recycling or whatever down.
Yeah, on the back. There's openings for them to come in and out. And their vendors who pick them up can pull around back and get to them.
Did you ever do anything different to the trucks to pick up that high, that straight before they tail?
He, he might have to adjust a little bit as far as pull up back and, or pulling up while he's putting down.
That's a lot of straight up.
But actually, he done it pretty well. I mean, you know, it'll be a little different when they're full, but.
Be here, could be here.
But we know the truck will pick them up, set them down and. And it's a good idea because it's one of the few out there that you can actually do without buying a specialty truck.
That's what I, I've seen this.
And, you know, those trucks are almost four hundred thousand dollars now. So we, you picked a good one, boy.
What, what did you say about preventing people who are not supposed to use these dumpsters to use them?
They will be locked.
They'd be locked.
Yeah, they'll have the people that can use them, that can register to use and we'll give them a key.
And, and the fees they pay now for their gray and green cans, that fee still stays on them for the use of this.
Who's got the clicker?
They can come at any time and. The day or night and open them.
Wear it there.
I can say where I could pay for yourself by fifty, twenty.
Can we charge them for the lost keys?
Well, I was asked about that, what's going to happen, you know, is people switch out, move in and out or hand these keys off or lose them. I'll tell them this, best thing to do is every couple of years it might pay to switch locks. But whatever we do, we're not going to give them, we're not going to make it to twenty thirty-five, which is the unofficial key to the city.
The official, unofficial key.
Hey, yeah.
Rate scam.
But unless y'all got any questions, that's all I've got.
Shaping up well.
It's looking good.
Yeah, I know. I know Jimmy's guys, once we're done. They're going to come through there at the curb and, you know, do some landscaping and all. That'll help.
They have a good job. Thank you.
Thank you much.
Not a question but a comment. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
A little real estate office.
Yeah.
So everybody here doesn't have a birthday as much as they should.
A lot of great people were born in February is all I can say. A lot of great people, right? All right. If that's nothing else, y'all have a good night and I appreciate your time. If you have any questions, anything during the week, call.
Thank you very much.
Been honored to serve you and I still look at you.
I'm going to.
Thank you.
Just a, a personal thing here. I passed out to all the council. Everybody's got one. It's a letter asking the city to help publicize an effort in Swanonoa, North Carolina to. They are, there's a project up there filling. Most everybody up there are living in tents and, and lawnmower sheds. And they're trying to heat during this tremendous cold weather with whatever. Got whatever. Have and. There's an effort up there to fill and replace twenty-pound cylinders like you would have on your grill. Which is not particularly efficient, but it's probably what most of those people have and/or have access to. So. Letter from a local group that. And to help the effort in Swanon. And it just explains what you can do if you want to make a cash donation, if you. Make unused gas bottles or whatever, who to contact. Pass one down to Holly for the record. One for the newspaper. And let's. Letting people know about this. Thank you so much. We. Really have a method to publicize it on, on any of our. Because we're so restricted on what we can and can't do. But I told these people that I would get the word out, so. Mr. Sub.
Yes, sir.
You're next.
Thank you, sir. You have a resolution in front of you. Tonight, I'm not asking for actual approval of the lease agreement. This is a lease of space on the elevated water tank on South Church Street. It's electronic communications equipment. That is, that equipment is already there. This, the previous lease, which was entered in twenty fourteen. We're now looking to get into. With all. Doing business as. And wireless. We've had some exchanges, but we've now come to terms. Standard, standard terms and conditions that were previously. And they also are. We do ten-year leases, so the lease term is sixty. Agreed to a ten percent increase for that base term of five years. And once we get to the end of that one, the extension term to take it out to ten will be another ten percent increase on top of that. So since we are in agreement with standard terms, I'm asking for council authorization to publish notice in compliance with the general statutes that the council's intent to approve the lease, that requires thirty days' notice. So therefore it will not be back on your agenda until. Don't have enough days before the. City council meeting. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
This a exclusive?
No, sir, there, we have two.
I thought we.
You, you are absolutely correct. There are two other vendors. Recently completed leases with. Yes, sir, it is.
I think we need to move along with the advertising.
I'm looking for adoption of the resolution by reference with.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to.
Mayor, I move we adopt the resolution by reference.
We have a motion by Mr. Bell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Heath. Discussion. On favor, say. All opposed? I'm going to swap around here. Item fifteen is a request for a motion for the city council. Things have transpired since the agenda was put together and it appears that we do not have a closed session. With our attorney. So we're just going to move on over that. And that makes sixteen moot. And we will go back to fourteen and we'll start with discussions of items. The first thing I want to say is that once again, I didn't do what I was, should have done and what I intended to do, but. Our councilperson Kelly Heath received from the Chamber of Commerce last Friday night, the Athena Award. And it takes a long time to say everything that they recognized in her receiving the award that qualified her to be probably a unanimous choice for the. Athena is sponsored by. Of Remax Realty and. And it honors a female leader in. That is noteworthy and Kelly Heath is certainly noteworthy.
Thank you.
And at that same award ceremony, our own Addie Quarter, who is our Main Street Director for the City of Ashboro, who is actually an Ashboro city employee in this building. Her organization, Main Street Ashboro, was named Organization of the Year and that was based on a lot of the great things that we, we all benefit from in this community. Special events and whatnot, the concerts, the streetery and many other things that the. Organization sponsors. So they were named. Of the year and Addie was named Emerging Leader of the Year. Know Addie or. Opportunity to work with Addie, you can imagine that. She. Has that award. She's a. Our bundle of energy and certainly does great things for the city and for downtown Ashboro. So hiring her was a stroke of genius.
Along with that mayor. It's worth. Google Athena Award. And see. The globe. Previous. Won that award. And that's quite. It's quite a.
National. Certainly. Deserved. All right. Discussion. On the agenda. Years of service. John and I will attend. And recognize all of our employees for five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five and thirty years of employment. And I guess you'll get one, huh? The thirteenth at seven o'clock is Galentine's Day. In the paper. Gal.
Oh, a Galentine. Got it.
Legally. Uh, Legally Blonde with, uh,
Reese Witherspoon.
Yeah, Reese Witherspoon. Alright, the Friday Valentine's Day.
Leave that, uh, Colonel Hanson, it and Tony, the fourteenth too? Three o'clock, right. You wanna tell about who's getting promoted while you
Yeah, um, so Captain Travis Curry, they just announced, I think, uh, a little three, three days ago, that he's getting a board of the majors.
And another well-deserved honor. And that's three, three o'clock?
Three o'clock.
Okay.
Three o'clock.
On the fourteenth, Friday the fourteenth. Uh, Serendipity is the movie that night at seven thirty. Uh, the fifteenth, uh, Signature, the Sunset Signature Series, Mark Mathabane, um, who is a, a award-winning author, uh, and a, uh, refugee uh, talking about his, uh, trials and tribulations and how he escaped, uh, poverty and whatnot with a tennis scholarship. And that was what the book was about, uh, okay. Randolph Comprehensive Transportation Plan Survey on the fifteenth deadline.
Deadline to report, your deadline to complete, if people haven't completed. You can do that online, John?
That's correct.
On the nineteenth, the mayor's gonna talk to citizens of Ashboro down at Randolph Community College, um, about the progress that's been made in the last few years and some of the issues that we have facing us as we go forward.
That's at the J B and Claire Training Center.
In the Training Center, uh, and
J B and Claire Davis.
Hosted by Shaw Ardeland at the, uh, college. No ticket is required, just come at eight o'clock. Program starts about eight thirty. Uh, Friday the twenty-first is Friday Night Bluegrass, the band being New Direction at the Sunset Theater, and the twenty-second is Downtown Ashboro Sip and Shop Event. Uh, put on by the, uh, Downtown Ashboro Incorporated.
Award-winning Downtown Ashboro.
Um, alright, that's what I have on my calendar.
One thing, Mayor, the council knows this, but the mayor and I and Assistant City Mayor Trevor Nuttall are traveling to Washington DC on Monday, about lunchtime, you'll have Joey and I's travel information. We are going into Reagan National Airport, I hope we're not landing on thirty-three.
Can't reach you there.
And, uh, we'll be all day Tuesday in, uh, rep, on Capitol Hill, we're working toward, uh, secure the exemption get our financing for the fire station exemption to the US Department of Agriculture's rural development rules. We're the only jurisdiction in Randolph County that doesn't qualify for too large. So we think we got a good, uh, chance. Uh, I'll get, first I'm gonna get to thank Congressman Hudson. I did not, when I planned this trip, I had no idea, I had no idea, I asked Mayor at the meeting, what was Cam here for, and I didn't, what's Martha doing here, so, uh, I was
Haven't heard him.
Mayor didn't know either. Trevor knew. But he's not here. Trevor made sure Martha was here. Oh, okay. Oh, alright, um, Kelly.
Okay, um, so we have four students from Student Lift tonight in this row, he appreciate all of you. Of course, that is a program of the Ashboro Randolph Chamber of Commerce, and hope you learned a little bit about how your city government works tonight. Um, also wanna thank David Hudson's and his team. Uh, those folks were out in some really extreme temperatures and weather, uh, getting things done. Uh, so certainly always appreciate the work that they do and, um, I just can't thank all of you enough for all the incredible comments and support and just from the community, I, I am so just honored and incredibly grateful, uh, to have the privilege to serve this community, um, and that includes service sitting right here in this chair, I do not take it for granted, so, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Swears.
It's nice to see the four-way stoplights flashing on a regular cycle instead of strobing. I think that's gonna be a, a positive impact, I've seen positive comments in the community about it, which I, which I appreciate.
You've actually seen some positive comments?
Yes.
Well, I haven't.
People like it.
Yeah.
I broke through two of them.
Yeah, I do.
Alright, Clark.
I, I would echo that, I've seen a couple, you know, Facebook Ashboro description or another, and I think it's been well-received. I don't think, you know, going forward, the others that are proposed by the state would be nearly as well-received.
No.
But I think in those particular locations where they are, uh, the four-way stop would be, uh, a, a good
I think we all agree that, with the three that the state picked out, not only bad choices, but ridiculous.
Dangerous choices.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Uh, as I said that night, one that, Kibbit and Church.
Troggen's office.
Yeah, going. Uphill. You can't see either direction.
And it's at a school.
Um.
Yep. And I, and I wanna wish Eddie and Joey a happy birthday.
Is there anybody else in here?
I don't know, I, I, I tried to memorize it, you know, coming in.
Did you mean Bill? Bill. I'm six, I'm six months out.
Bill and Joey and then, uh, Michael Leonard sometime.
But I hate you don't wanna keep bringing that up.
So, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Yeah, we get to wait next.
And you expect their
What an incredible meeting you've had tonight, folks.
As long as they keep coming, I'm happy.
So many accolades, uh, uh, um, meaningful presentations, accomplishments, it's, uh, it's hard to, it's hard to enumerate all of them, but, you know, the improvements to downtown, and we have our own goddess now and refugees from congressional hearing, that was one honor bestowed on, on John, that, that, that recognition, I think, is very significant, uh, uh, I expect it to be on C-SPAN, I'll watch the night, I'll play it back. But, uh, but anyway, it's a lot, a lot going forward, so mu- so much positive, uh, that we have to share, and I think tonight was a great and Adam, the chamber dinner, it, it went off well. You know, some people even understood what you were saying. Netflix plays a lot of British snows and I'm getting better with my schedule. But anyway, um, Eddie?
Um, yeah, it's a, a lot of, a lot of awards and a lot of positive things going on now, so and it, it was interesting when, uh, they hadn't gotten two sentences into Kelly and I said, it's Kelly. So, uh, but anyway, everybody's going, but I was right, so, so there, I got to be right one time this month, so that was good.
I witnessed it, he was right.
But I, I'm excited to see young people here tonight, that, that always, uh, encourage and gives us hope for our future. And I know the one young lady here, she's in Key Club, probably more if you are, I don't know, but anyway, so if, 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 yeah, so if, so, uh, I, I didn't wanna embarrass you like we do at Kiwanis when Key Club members, uh, come and we make you stand up and say who you are and all that, but, but I really would like to know your name. And tell us who you are, because you are we will need to track your names in the near future, because you're gonna be the leaders.
And Karen gonna be paying social security.
Yeah, we're counting on you to be retired, so, so if you'd like to tell us who you are, we'd love to hear who you are.
And what school?
Yeah, what schools.
I'm Casey Smith and I go to U R I Charter Academy. I'm Heidi McNeil and I'm at U R I Charter Academy.
I'm Sam Harris and I too also go to U R I Charter Academy.
And I'm Ethan Steele and I also go to U R I Charter Academy.
There you go, thank you. I got to speak to a group one time and they said, well, how did you get started and, and people saw you as a leader, and I said, well, the first time I did it, I just showed up. And showing up is part of the battle right there, so if you show up and you know what's going on, you're smart kids, and I know you are. So we're looking for big things for you for the future, thank you for being here.
In your case, you showed up and
That's right. And, uh, and then it was associations with really smart success that I am today.
Um, I, who was the, who was the organization that did the warming station? Who was, who was sponsoring that, it was, uh?
North Washington Carver Community and Richmond Center.
Okay, I wasn't sure the people that did the, at the soup kitchen, which, who was running it, but I just wanted to say, I went over several times and I was really impressed, they did a really good job. There was a lot of volunteers and, uh, they, they helped the homeless people through the real, you know, the real cold nights, so I appreciate them people stepping up and doing that.
Joe.
At the chamber dinner, I had the, uh, uh, I was fortunate enough to sit beside our new city manager. And I, it reaffirmed, not that we had any doubts, but just that bit of chatting that we got to do throughout the evening solidified that we made the right choice.
Absolutely.
Nah, 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 I'd keep that to myself.
He was trying to get to his ear first.
Yeah, but he, he just, he was, uh, he, he met a lot of folks, he's very polished, he's, uh, I think, uh, I think we're gonna be well-served. You, you are well-served, I would mention today at the North Carolina City and County Managers Conference where Trevor and Donald are right now, um, everybody was, uh, congratulating Ashboro for the best trade made since, uh, the Yankees got Babe Ruth and the Red Sox were a hundred thousand dollars, so, uh,
Speaker of the House was regretful.
The speaker, if you don't know, his friends house, so that probably helped. He's a very talented person. He's a very personable person, he has a lot experience. Be interesting to be on, uh, the podcast and experiences of western North Carolina. It's, it's pretty amazing. I talked to, uh, Gary Jackson today, the retired city manager of Asheville. And over a ten-year period, they put sixty, talking about, Mr. Skeen said sixty million dollars of water and sewer improvements in the ground and they went away in fourteen hours. I don't know if you saw this, that House and Senate, what kind of House and Senate's back in session? Right off the bat, the governor asked for a billion dollars. Um, the, the, the US House and Senate are working on their budget, it will include massive amounts for disaster relief between southern California and western North Carolina and Florida. And, um, right around the corner, and what's that mean, Hurricane? Remind you that southeastern North Carolin recovered from Hurricane Matthew, I think was the last one, I don't know, we've had so many, you can keep up with them.
It seems to be getting worse every year. Used to talk about a hundred-year storm, now we get one every year.
You're right.
Okay, um, thanks for being here, hope you're enjoying your student lift. That's a good program.
A good experience.
I will call this meeting adjourned.